Argus Courier, the League of Women Voters of Sonoma County and the American Association of University Women, I'd like to welcome you to a candidate's forum for Petaluma City Council. I'm Pam Greenter, and I'll be your moderator for the next 90 minutes. Tonight, you're only going to get a brief look at these four fine candidates, just a little snapshot, taste of where they are, a face to put with a name. We hope that you'll be inspired to call them up, ask them questions, take a look at their website if you wonder more things after tonight. It's going to be tempting, but in order to keep things moving along, please hold your applause, your hoots or your hollers or your snorts if you hear something you like or you don't like along the way. As you know, Petaluma City Government is comprised of six council members and a mayor. About half the positions are open every two years, and so this year Petalumans will elect three of these four fine people come November. I'll give you a little overview of how the format is this evening, much the same as it's always been. The candidates drew lots for the order in which they're seated, on my left, your right. They will answer questions that have been prepared by the sponsors first, and we'll intersperse those with questions from the audience that are general enough in nature to apply to all of them and in good taste. We should have time for probably three or four of those questions. Following question-answer time, we'll give the candidates an opportunity to do a wrap-up, sort of a summary of their high points, for a minute. Our timekeeper this evening is Tiffany Renee, thank you very much for that. She's going to indicate when there is half-minute left to their time as a reminder for them to wrap up. The questions will be anywhere from a minute to minute and a half, and I'll let them know. And the red card, of course, will be to finish your sentence and stop talking. So now it's my pleasure to introduce the candidates to you. Closest to me is Bill Welpert, an architect and planning commissioner for Petaluma; Mike Healy, an attorney and a city council member for Petaluma; Kathy Miller, also an attorney and a city council member for Petaluma; and Gabe Kearney, a realtor and city council member for Petaluma. So let's start the question-and-answer portion. Let's do this with one minute. Bill, what's the job of city council? What's your role and responsibility, and what qualities do you have that would make you an effective city council member?
The city council helps direct what goes on in the city. The planning commission reviews the projects that come before the city, but the city council directs the budget, hires city staff, oversees the finances for the city. My experience as a planning commissioner and also historic and cultural review before that, and my experience as an architect allows me to do this job and do it well, I think.
Thank you. Mike, role of a city council member and what you bring to the table?
So back in the 1950s, the city charter for Petaluma was amended to create a strong city manager form of government. And to reinforce that, the charter also sets our pay at $5 a meeting, maximum of four meetings a month. And so the city manager is really the key person running city government. The city council is here to set policy, to approve a budget, and with planning decisions to be the final voice on whether entitlements will be granted. I've been doing this for four terms, for 16 years. I'm an attorney. I used to be an engineer. I'm not afraid of math, so I bring a lot of things to the table. And I'm a team player, and I enjoy working with my colleagues on the city council and on city staff.
Thank you. Kathy, same question, role and what you bring to the table?
So the role of the city council is to enact policy and to listen to our constituents and make decisions that are in the best interests of the entire community. And in doing that, we do the budget, we oversee development, we do public safety and public works. So it's a big job, and it requires a breadth of knowledge that I think I have. I've been on the city council now for, this is my fourth year. And as an attorney, I'm used to looking at things from a lot of different angles, and I think that's very important when you're faced with the decisions that the city council has to make. I enjoy very much being on the city council. I enjoy working with my colleagues and working collaboratively.
Gabe?
Thank you, Pam, and thank you to the sponsors this evening. Our job as council members is one that I've been doing for the past a little over five years, and I thoroughly enjoy it. Our job is to listen to the voice of the community and make decisions and give direction to our staff on how the city moves forward. Every two years, we reelect or elect three people onto the city council, and every two years, we go through and reevaluate what our goals are as a city. What are the top priorities for the city, and what areas are we going to direct our funds and our resources, very limited as they be? How are we going to direct those funds and how are we going to direct those resources? Do we pave more parks, or pave more roads, build more parks? Do we expand the swimming pool hours of operation? Do we spend money on putting a school resource officer in schools? Those are all things that we have to look at and make decisions. And I think over the past five years, I've done a good job, and hopefully in November on the 8th, the voters will reelect me. Thank you.
Perfect. So now we're going to take a look at the famous budget questions. The 2016-17 Petaluma City Budget is in the neighborhood of $184 million with expenditures divided into some seven fund categories. So let's talk money a little bit. To you, Mike, a recent press Democrat article highlighted a shortage of affordable housing in Sonoma County, Petaluma included. What should the city do to encourage more affordable housing development for middle-to-low-income earners? Take a minute.
One minute, okay. So, you know, earlier in my tenure on the city council, we had a great track record of partnering with local nonprofits, Pep and Eden and Burbank, and using redevelopment dollars and creating affordable housing projects around the community. We built the Mary Isaac Center with redevelopment dollars. With the state budget crisis and the current governor, redevelopment has now gone away. So that was our biggest revenue source for addressing affordable housing. But we do have other revenue sources. We have the commercial NEXUS fee, which I supported 10 or so years ago, that's starting to bring in some revenue. We have in lieu fees. There is a new affordable housing inclusionary project that will be part of the Brody Ranch property out by the Corona Traffic Circle. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on down, Kathy, what should the city do to encourage more affordable housing for middle and low-income earners?
Well, I think we have to encourage the developers who are coming into town and want to build in Petaluma to build affordable housing. We have some affordable housing that is in the pipeline and being built, and I'm very pleased that we're getting that accomplished. We also have in lieu fees, and we'll need to build up those in lieu fees and then work with the nonprofits that build affordable housing, like Burbank and Eden and Pep. And so we'll have to continue on that path. The loss of redevelopment has really impacted our ability to do that, but we do recognize that there's a need, and we have been working on satisfying that need, and we'll continue to work on that and make it a priority going forward.
Thank you. Gabe?
So in addition to our role as overseeing the budget and the direction for the city, we oftentimes have to go out and advocate to the other elected officials to make sure that what our priorities are, are a priority for them. We, as a city council, joined League of California Cities, and some of us have been very active in getting affordable housing to be one of the priorities for the League of California Cities. Advocating to our state assembly members and state senators that represent Sonoma County to bring back a funding stream for affordable housing, I think is the best direction for us. As far as the housing that's in the pipeline, making sure that inclusionary housing is included in the projects, encouraging folks to do that as opposed to paying the in lieu fee is important so that we don't concentrate all affordable housing in one area, and we have folks all over the community that can enjoy the different aspects of our community that make it so beautiful.
Thank you very much. Bill, what should the city do to encourage more affordable housing for middle and low-income earners?
The system that we've been using hasn't really been able to provide much affordable housing, especially since redevelopment fees have been taken. But what we can do is raise the in lieu fees. We can restrict the Airbnb regulations that we passed just a couple of years ago. They've taken a lot of affordable housing, long-term leases off the market. We could think about creating smaller lot sizes. A lot of people like to put smaller homes on their lots now, but there's still large lots, so it doesn't really save them any money. There's also three new accessory dwelling unit bills that were just signed by the governor, and if we act on those and adopt them, those are three more ways that we can provide more affordable housing.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll start with Kathy. Kathy, rents have skyrocketed in housing for over the past few years, and we've all heard horror stories about greedy landlords and evictions. Do you favor implementing a rent control ordinance? And if so, what criteria would you use? If not, why not?
So I don't favor a rent control ordinance, and the reason for that is because we do not have enough stock in Petaluma, enough housing stock in Petaluma that would be subject to the rent control ordinance under state law to make it worthwhile. We just don't have enough housing stock that would be subject to rent control, so I don't support a rent control ordinance.
Thank you. Gabe, rent control, yes, no, and why?
I'm not in favor of a rent control ordinance. The money that would cost the city to implement it would not justify the small impact that it would have. So the state law prohibits the inclusion of anything built before 1995. As many folks that live here know, most of our housing stock was built before 1995. And so to spend roughly a million dollars of our general fund dollars on a rent control program would not be a wise decision, in my opinion. Making it so we have more housing stock available will lessen the demand. Currently, we have about a 1% vacancy rate in apartment complexes, and so if there's more apartments and rental opportunities, the rents are going to go down. Simple economics.
Thank you. Bill, rent control, yea or nay?
Well, the issue's kind of complex, and I certainly think that there should be some review of evictions. I think eviction should be justified. But it seems funny to me that if you're in favor of affordable housing, that there isn't some mechanism by which we can regulate the rentals, the rate of rentals, the increase of rentals in the town. I know there's state law that restricts us from doing certain things, but if we really want to try to make our community more affordable, I think there must be ways that we can somehow regulate the cost of rental housing.
Thank you. And Mike, rental housing, rent control, yea or nay?
I don't support rent control. We actually do have rent control for mobile homes in the community, and I support continuing that. But, you know, those of us who've been on the council for a while have experienced the frustration of that, and it's not a magic bullet by any stretch of the imagination. As Gabe mentioned, there are state restrictions on prohibition on rent control on units built after 1995, actually. And just to connect a couple dots there, that statute is why we cannot require inclusionary zoning in apartments. And there was a bill to overturn that in the legislature last session. It was vetoed by the governor, and there was another bill in the legislature to overturn that rule, that court decision. This session, it failed. So I think that's a darn shame. I wish that would be overturned.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Gabe, again with one minute. Do you see some flexibility in the budget to allocate money to support organizations that assist with affordability issues like COTS, Boys and Girls Club, PEP, Petaluma People's Services Center? If so, how would you determine the dollar amount of such support?
So the city of Petaluma does get money from HUD through the Community Development Block Grant Program, which, when I served on the Community Development Committee for the county, we oversaw the distribution of those funds for the county. In the city of Petaluma, we have a grant program that the different housing providers in the community do apply for funding through that. Boys and Girls Club doesn't apply for funding through that, but we do provide funding to the Boys and Girls Club at the dollar of $150,000 a year for the support of their onsite after-school programs in the low-income housing developments. And so when we look at PPSC and COTS, we currently fund them through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Unfortunately, the federal level of those dollars continues to decrease, and so it makes it tough for us to decide which program gets the most money, but it usually is done in a way that's fair and equitable for all of the agencies in the community.
Thank you. Bill, again, the question is, do you see any flexibility in the budget that would allow to support organizations that assist with affordability issues?
Well, obviously, I don't deal with the budget as often as my opponents do. So a big question for me is, why don't we have the money? Certainly, COTS and Pep and some other other agencies have proven themselves to be effective at providing housing, shelter, getting people back to their jobs, and finding more permanent housing. We've got a lot of great services that are supporting our community, and yet we can't seem to find the funds to support them. Funding them actually helps us reduce fees in other areas that would go to serve them. So I think we need to find the funding.
Thank you. Mike, flexibility in that budget?
So in question two, what was your total budget number again?
I had $184 million.
Okay. So the biggest chunk of that is in the enterprise funds, the water and sewer utilities primarily, and we can't use that for affordable housing. The biggest portion of the rest of it is the general fund, which you're competing with other extremely high-priority spending needs. So what we're really talking about are special funds. And so the in lieu housing funds we've talked about, the federal funds that Gabe talked about, the NEXUS fee funds, and other things of that nature. And we're, you know, hopefully, the League of Cities, state legislature, are heavily focused on this issue. They know that we've been damaged by the loss of redevelopment in creating housing. So I'm hopeful that there will be more flexibility going forward to support some of these programs. But it's a really challenging environment out there.
Thank you. Kathy?
So, you know, we do, the city does support those programs, and it's important and it's a priority for us to support those programs because they do excellent work in the community. COTS has got a transitional housing program that's bringing people out of homelessness that's recognized nationally. So we have terrific nonprofits that are doing terrific work in the community. We do support them with special funds and federal funds, and, you know, hopefully, going forward, we'll have a little more flexibility in our budget to provide them with additional support. But we do also have to maintain the core services that our constituents require, and unfortunately, that takes up, you know, the lion's share of the budget.
Thank you. Next question, Gabe, this will start with you. Any development, whether it's residential or commercial, requires infrastructure and maintenance to handle traffic, water and sewer, utilities, public safety, et cetera, with a water supply being a really key concern. What areas do you think need to be given highest priority to handle growth?
So if you look at the general plan for the city and look at what areas of the city are left, high-density housing, mixed-use development in high-density areas is really what is left for our community. Our city has done a very good job of conserving water, and we continue to conserve at a rate of, I believe Mike reported at the council meeting on Monday, at 23% in the last reporting period. So we're doing a good job at saving water and doing conservation efforts. But going forward, our priorities are going to have to be infill projects and looking at how we can best utilize the land that's available for development.
Thank you. So, Bill, the question is, knowing that these infrastructures are going to be taxed, what areas do you think need to be given highest priority to handle growth?
Well, I would beg to differ that we've done a good job in developing the infill that we have. There are infill projects, and there's good infill projects. And with limited resources, such water and energy, it's important to use them the most efficient means possible. We have developed over 45 acres of development that probably has less revenue per acre than downtown, and it's twice the size. So I would focus on better development, development that is more dense, especially around transportation, opportunities for mixed use. We haven't done a good job developing mixed use. It's been mostly retail, commercial development, and it's not providing the income that our city needs, and that's why we're scrounging for money.
Thank you. Mike, your thoughts? What areas do you think need to be given the highest priority in terms of infrastructure?
So on the water side, let me talk about that a bit, because I'm a representative to the Water Advisory Committee, and I'm the current chair of the group, which is all the contractors with the county water agency. And as Gabe mentioned, even though mandatory conservation is off, no longer in effect, our customers are continuing to do very impressively there. We're down 23% from the 2013 base for the month of August. And that kind of is consistent with a larger story, and people don't really realize this, that water demand in Petaluma peaked back in 2001 at 3.7 billion gallons, and last year, it was down to about 2.7 billion gallons. So you have this enormous drop in consumption. The conservation continues and continues and continues, and it's going to continue, and it far outpaces population growth. So our water use is on a downward path, a strong downward path that's going to continue to be. And I hope you have other questions about other infrastructure issues, because 60 seconds really isn't even remotely enough to get into that.
Sorry about that. And Kathy?
Sure. So, you know, we're going to go forward with, you know, infill development. It needs to be transit-oriented. It needs to be water-saving and green. And all of that being said, you know, we are doing an excellent job with our, we're doing an excellent job with our water conservation. We're not going to see people who have ripped out their lawns and put in drought-resistant landscaping going back to big, green, thirsty lawns. I think we've done a good job with the infill development that we've done, and I think we're going to continue to look at that. And we have to look at that because we have to also address the housing issue, and that's a big part of it. And we need more affordable housing for people, and you can't say we're not going to develop on the one hand, and on the other hand, say we need affordable housing.
Thank you. So we'll start back with Bill. Bill, do you believe that more staff is needed in our police and fire department? And if so, how can we pay for them and the equipment needed for a 21st-century force?
Well, our police and fire do a great job for our community, and we probably do need more staff. But with our budget as it is and our, I won't say inability, but we're barely able to meet the pensions and salaries of firearm police now, it takes up 70% of our general fund. I think because we have a low crime rate, we don't have any gang violence in our schools, all new construction is required to have fire sprinklers, I think we can probably hold on firearm police where they're at.
Thank you. Mike, same question. Do we need more, and how do we pay for them if we do?
So I think fire staffing is generally adequate, although we are going to be starting a third ambulance in the near term with part-time personnel. I think police staffing, I think the community perceives that everything is fine. Those of us who are closer to the situation know that we're down 10 officers from where we should be. There are certain services that are just not being performed, communities, officers at the schools, for instance. I think we have been able to fix the problem with police cars and ambulances and fire trucks, but we do have very severe problems with the fire stations. We have one fire station that was built in the 1930s. It needs to be replaced. We have other two, two other fire stations that are about 40 years old and need substantial upgrades, and we don't have the funds for any of those things. And, you know, I think the public perception is that those departments are doing fine, and they really are very challenged in terms of where they are. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy, same question. Do we need more, and how do we pay for them if we do?
Well, we don't, I don't think we need more fire personnel. We are, we're staffed there, and, but we are 10 down in our police department, and that does create a problem. And, you know, we have police officers that are covering very large, very large areas of the community, and that means that, you know, sometimes the coverage is not what we would like it to be. People don't hear about it too much because we do have a fairly, you know, a fairly low crime rate, but it is a problem. And it's a problem, it's a budget problem, too, because what ends up happening is we do have to staff, staff the city, and we end up paying overtime to make sure that we're fully staffed and fully covered. And so if we had a few more police officers, that would, that would be very helpful. How we fund that, that's a challenge, and it's something that we need to address going forward.
Thank you. Gabe?
So thankfully, violent crime, our violent crime rate in Petaluma is low, but our property crime rate has gone up, and the amount of drug crimes that have been going on in the community have gone up. Anyone that has NICSOL and gets the emails and text messages from the police department can see that they're happening with a pretty regular frequency, and it's folks that are coming from outside of our community to commit those crimes. We don't have an adequate amount of officers to investigate and respond to all of those calls. When you're short officers on the streets, one of them goes down on injury, you either have to backfill with overtime, and continuing to backfill with overtime leads to more injuries because the officers aren't adequately rested. So it's an important issue that we get back to the staffing that we were at 10 years ago, and hopefully, we can continue to do that. We've been filling positions, but hopefully, we can continue to move down that road. Thank you.
Thanks. So let's talk transportation. Why don't we extend all the way to a minute and a half for answers on this? Sorry, we perhaps could have done that sooner. So street conditions and traffic congestion, this is to you, Mike, were considered the most serious problem facing Petalumans, according to a poll taken of Petaluma residents, as reported in the Argus Courier in April. What solutions, beside the eventual Rainier Crosstown Connector, do you propose to help alleviate these problems? Street conditions and traffic congestion?
So I'll actually start with Rainier because it's a two-part question, and, you know, that's been talked about in this community for longer than I've lived here. But what we've now managed to achieve is $26 million set aside that can be used for the Rainier Connector. We've never had that before. That figure is about to grow to $34 million. That's pretty close to the price tag of the thing. When Measure X was being, Measure Q was being talked about two years ago, we were talking about including a component to accelerate the delivery of Rainier. We're not talking about that anymore. So I think that's, that's very real. On the condition of the streets, that's well over a $100 million problem that we're facing at this point. And so, and I think the community gets that. We did some polling on that as well, and I believe that was reported. And... And looking at a special tax, so we don't get the pension issue thrown at us, you need a 2/3 margin, and the community was willing to tax themselves to fix streets and only streets at a 64% rate. And that was both impressive and incredibly frustrating because of that 2/3 threshold. So either we have some education to do in the community to try to get us over the threshold, or, you know, there's a bill in the legislature that if it gets on the ballot would reduce that to 55% for street projects, as was done for school bonds 10 years ago. And that's, that's something that's very much alive, and we'll be looking at in the lame duck session in November.
Thank you. Kathy, so "Street conditions and traffic congestions are high priority. What solutions, in addition to Rainier, do you propose?"
So, in addition to Rainier, which, you know, as Mike said, we're close to having the money for it. Rainier is going to happen when the widening of 101 through the middle of Petaluma occurs. One of the things that I do as I'm on the board of the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, and in that capacity, we've just secured funding to widen 101 from the south part of Petaluma down across the county line. And so now we're turning our attention to the middle portion of Petaluma, the widening through the center of Petaluma. And that's an $85 million project. And I think what you're going to see happen is an extension, you know, we'll go out, we'll have to go out to the voters for an extension of Measure M, and that is going to be a lot of how we fund that last chunk through the center of Petaluma. If Measure M is extended, we'll also, I'm also on a committee that's looking at how to allocate funds from the extension of Measure M. So we anticipate that we'll see more funds from Measure M come to local streets, which will provide some relief for us. We're also, like, like Mike said, looking at a potential special tax. We're spending $3 million a year on our roads here in town. It's $180 million to get them all up to good condition. So, you know, we've got a considerable shortfall, and it's about educating the public on that.
Thank you. Gabe?
So the current council has directed staff to dedicate new, a percentage of new revenues to road repairs. And so we've increased the amount of money that we're spending on road repairs and infrastructure improvements to our roads. We've increased that over the past four years. We're going to continue to do that and continue to move forward with that. But we also need to look at how we can encourage folks to get out of a car and into public transit. The entire time I've been on the council, I've been advocating for and working to increase our public transit options here in town. We've expanded services in our transit system, in our getting ready to be able to pair up with the Smart Train service when that starts in the next couple of months. And so looking at regionally how we can increase the amount of folks that are using transit as an option is an important part moving forward with our transportation needs.
Thank you. Bill, your thoughts on street conditions and traffic congestion?
Well, two years ago, there was a tax proposal offered that would have been a general tax, and it was said that it would go toward roads, but it wasn't a focused tax. It wasn't promised that it would go toward roads. And it probably could have passed at a 2/3 majority, but, but it didn't. It wasn't offered that way, and it failed. I don't know that we need to educate the public. I think we need to educate our city council about what the community really wants. We talk about Rainier for over 20 years, and it's been so long that the traffic reports now, we're not sure that that will actually relieve the traffic that it was intended to do. We probably need two Crosstown Connectors. Caulfield may be a higher, a higher usage and be able to reduce traffic than Rainier. But what we really need are options, and what we're doing is not providing the options that we should be getting when it comes with development. And the greatest example was the Marina Apartments just recently, where the developer got everything they wanted to build their apartments. The only thing the city asked for was 200 feet of bike path that would allow everybody from south of Lakeville to get to the Smart Train station without having to take a car, and they've denied that. We denied it twice at city council, but they've overturned it every time.
Thank you very much. And how funny you should say, what a segue, about bikes. We're talking about transportation. We've got a couple of audience questions that overlap each other, and we'll start this with Kathy. What would be your suggestion to promote safer connections across town for bicycle traffic?
So one of my council liaison appointments is to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And we look at, we have a list. We have a list of projects that we'd like to see done. It's kind of a wish list, and we evaluate it all of the time, and we're in the process. The city council has asked the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee to take a look at our list and prioritize it and start bringing some of those, those projects forward. And we have done some, some multi-use path projects, and actually, they're multi-use paths, not bike paths. We've done some multi-use path projects, and we'll continue to do those. We've completed one that, that connects the east side and the west side of town. We've also redone a portion of the multi-use path in Wiseman Park, and we'll continue to, to make those improvements across town.
Thank you. Gabe?
So creating alternatives like the multi-use paths, as has been mentioned, are very important, but we do need to prioritize which ones are going to be the, give us the best bang for our buck, and which are the biggest priorities for the community going forward. And it sounds as though the Bike and Pedestrian Committee is starting to do that. You know, we've done a lot of work, though, to improve the bike lanes that we have currently, and hopefully with the, with the road diet coming forward before us in the near future, we can improve upon some of the bike paths or multi-use paths on the west side of town. Improvements that were just done to Lakeville, and hopefully we can expand those. And so we're making steps forward, but we do need to prioritize and see which ones are the most important and what's going to be the best impact for our dollar.
Thank you. Again, Bill, we're talking about promoting safer connections for bicycle traffic. What would be a suggestion or a plan?
Well, the, the bike paths are key. The, the road diet would help. It's not only about making the connections. I mean, we have a, we have a plan already in place for the paths that we want to develop, and they're not getting developed as we do development. We also, we also need safer, safer routes. It's not just a matter of painting a stripe on the road, but they, they need to be, roads need to be maintained. We need the safe routes to use the bike paths. You need to be able to ride down the road and not be in what they call the door zone, sandwiched between traffic lanes and parked cars. It's very dangerous. We need ways that we can place bikes after we've reached a destination. Bike paths are, aren't very well thought out, and there's signage and places to keep your bikes when you arrive at your destination. I'm, I'm excited to see that a little bit of Lakeville has been painted green. It, it offers a very clean demarcation for a bike path. I'd like to see more of that.
Thank you. And Mike?
I was excited to see the green paint on Lakeville without a road diet. I'm, I'm proud of the work that the council has done with my support to extend the Lynch Creek Trail in both directions into downtown and further out on the east side, and create the, the path along the eastern edge of the community. A lot of those things were done with Measure M funds. People also need to realize that we have $27 million baked into our, our Traffic Impact Fee Program for bike and pedestrian trails, so funding is, exists. We can prioritize, and I want to prioritize and deliver the highest priority next segments to the bike and pedestrian trail system. In all fairness, I think the, the trail segment that the planning commission got hung up with on, on the Marina Apartments is, is not the most important next priority. There are several other ones that are much more meaningful that we can deliver to the community, and we will do that.
Thank you. So in, in the theme of transportation, let's go from slower speed to higher speed. We'll start with Gabe. This will be sort of a two-parter. We'll do a minute and a half talking about, well, we'll put it all together. Sonoma Marina Transit, rail transit, commonly called SMART, will begin regular service soon. But the availability of parking is a concern. What might be your suggestions that the city, action that the city might take to address that? And then we'll circle back around with the, the other part of SMART. So parking, if you want to take up to a minute and a half to talk about how to, how to improve parking for SMART and its impact on the neighborhoods?
Sure. So in order for a transit system to be most effective, the stops or accessibility to it have to be within a half-mile of where people live. So it's, you're going to have more people riding if their way of getting onto that transit system is within a half-mile of their house, right? So advocating for that second SMART station, as we, as a council have done and continue to do, is important. Making sure our transit system links up with the SMART train and expanding the routes and refiguring the routes to get the highest amount of riders onto SMART is important. We're not going to be able to have a large parking structure in the downtown area for SMART, and so having a parking structure at the second spot is important. I think that is going to be the, the spot where more people that might ride in their car to the train station will go. And, and so we need to continue to fight for and work with our supervisor, David Rabbit, at the SMART Board to advocate for that project to go forward. But, you know, outside of driving, we can get people onto the Petaluma Transit System to get on the bus, take the bus to the SMART station, and then go from there.
Thank you. Bill, your thoughts?
I worked for two years with the SMART Station Area Specific Plan in developing the half-mile radius around the, the station, and, and it relies entirely on dense, mixed-use development. It's a, it's a wonderful plan. It's not the way we've been developing, but it's the way that we can have people working and living around the train stations that doesn't require that you have to get in a car in order to ride the train. As I said before, connectivity is critical with bike paths, with our public transportation. We do not put very much money, as a city, into our public transportation. We rely on other institutions and other sources of money to provide, to provide that. I'm excited that we have a couple of electric or hybrid buses about to serve our community, but I see that as just a, just a beginning. It's, it's a new way of looking at things in our future, and I, and I, it's going to be a mixture of various modes of transportation that's going to allow us to get where we need to get.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. So I actually served as a SMART director for three years, back when SMART had no money at all. So I tell the current directors that they're way better off than, than my day, when they just don't have enough money to do what, what they want to do. I've been working overtime to achieve the second Corona Station at Corona Road, because there was, you know, that one was, is not part of the first phase. There was some talk of moving it up to Adobe Lumber, which is not what this community needs, and I've had strong council support on that. That now looks like it's going to happen. It's going to have 150 parking space structure as part of that, and, and transit-oriented development on the rest of the site. I, I do think that folks who live within a half-mile radius of the downtown station, and I'm one of those folks, can walk to the station, and that's great for us, but there's a lot of people who don't. And so, yeah, there absolutely is a need for, for the city and SMART to cooperate on creating parking for the people who live further away and still want to get on the train and not get clogged down in the Nevada Narrows every day. So, you know, there's a lot of concern about that, because the, the way it's striped now, the people could just, the commuters could just use all the spaces at the Art Center and the Visitor Center, and there's no time limits there. They could overwhelm the, the downtown parking structure. They could overwhelm the Golden Eagle Parking Lot, and those are, you know, things that create their own challenges. So, yeah, we need to be working proactively with SMART to create parking for the downtown station.
Thank you, Mike. And Kathy?
So we, you know, we have the opportunity to develop the parcel that is near the SMART station, and, and I think part of any development in that parcel, it does have to be dense, it does have to be transit-oriented, but there also needs to be some parking in there for the downtown station, because in addition to the parking garages and parking lots that, Councilmember Healy is talking about being overwhelmed, we also have all those folks that live in that neighborhood right across the street from the downtown station, and we don't want them to not be able to park in front of their homes. So, you know, we have to be able to get people to the SMART station on foot, on their bikes, with public transportation, and also with their cars. We have to give people a choice, because that's the way people are going to ride SMART, is if they get that choice. I've advocated very hard for the second station at Corona, and we need to get that station built as well, and that station needs to have some, some parking. It also, there's a project that the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee just looked at near that second proposed station, and one of the things that we looked at was making sure that people could bike and walk from that development very easily to that second station. So we are working on all different, you know, all different modes of getting people to the, to the stations.
Thank you. Still staying around SMART, we'll start with Bill. Some of you might have noticed that the horn blows occasionally as they're trying out the, the train, and some people have said that a mile away, up on a hill, they can hear it very well. The question would be, where and when do you think, if you do, that quiet zones should be implemented, Bill?
I know that the city council discussed this last night, and I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I have talked to some of the residents in town about the quiet zones, and I can, I can hear the, the horn blowing. I live a mile away, and it's, it's very clear. And I, I can't see a good reason for residents that live closer to the station have, having to endure that. We've got, we've got crossing gates, we've got flashing signals, we've got bells, we've got concrete dividers between the lanes, so you can't turn around. I mean, how much more safety do you need? I mean, if somebody goes through that, they must have a pretty good intent in, in wanting to do that. So I, I am all for supporting the no-noise zone. I don't think we should blow horns in, in the residential areas downtown at the crossings that are close to the residential areas.
Thank you. Mike, where and during and when do you think there ought to be quiet zones implemented?
So we did have a lengthy workshop on that issue last night in this room, and, and the, the upshot is that the city council unanimously directed staff to move forward with trying to achieve quiet zones for the community from the north end of town to the south end of town, so the entire community. One of the areas most impacted is, is actually by the North, North McDowell Crossing, because it's right next to mobile homes and a single-family neighborhood. But we were warned that quiet zone is really the worst possible thing these things could be called. They are less noisy than regular. The, there are, this is an area that's very heavily regulated by federal rules and state rules, and there are liability issues, and so there are some tricky things to work through. We think we can work through them, but if you think the trains are noisy now with a few test trains coming through, the first trains, when regular operations- few test trains coming through, the first trains, when regular operations start up, will be coming south through town at 5:25 in the morning, and they'll keep going until 8:30 at night, and they'll be frequent. So, this is something that we're working with the other communities along the corridor. The city attorneys are working with each other. The city engineers are working with each other. I think we can achieve it. I think it's an important thing for the community, and once in a while, City Hall can get stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, where and when for quiet zones?
So, I'm not going to repeat a bunch of information that Mike has already provided. One thing that I did want to add is, the quiet zones, they're not really quiet. You're still going to hear a whistle when the train is coming into the station and a whistle when the train is leaving the station, and the engineer has the discretion to blow the horn if the engineer thinks it's necessary. So, what the quiet zone gets you is not the two, the four blasts, you know, that are kind of continuous as they go through those stations that are really close together. It gets you a little bit less noisy of a zone. And, you know, I think that's an important thing, but people need to be aware that quiet zone is kind of a misnomer, and it's not going to be quiet, but it will be quieter.
And Gabe, do you have something to add?
So, January, I think, is what the projected timeline was, that hopefully, there's certain waiting periods that we have to go through. There's a 21-day, a 30-day, and so hopefully, or I could be wrong with the exact numbers, but January was the projected timeline that, at the council level, we will be able to do or take the steps necessary in order to get the less loud-than-normal zone from the southernmost crossing in Petaluma to the northernmost crossing in Petaluma, which will hopefully reduce the amount of noise, because it is unbearable for a lot of folks, not only that have, I couldn't, I don't have a kid or baby, but putting down an infant or toddler to go take a nap with that train horn going would be just impossible, let alone people that work, shift work, and might be sleeping during the day when that train's running predominantly. So, we're working on the solution. It's moving forward. Everyone on the council is unanimous in support of it. There's no opposition to it. So, hopefully, it will be here by January.
Good, thank you. I noticed that a question from the audience sort of swings back a little bit to street transportation. If we were to start with Mike, a road diet, as it's called, as a solution, has been proposed for just about any place where we want to calm streets down. What are your thoughts on the council, on the stance the council should take on road diets?
Okay, so, I have a perfect track record of not having voted for any of the road diets to date, although in full admission, I had to recuse on one, because I live too close to it. I'll take a look at it. I actually am kind of skeptical. I think if a private developer had come in and said, "Hey, let's do a road diet on Petaluma Boulevard South," the bar would have been set a lot higher, and internally, there really has been no kind of rigorous analysis on that to confirm that that corridor will be able to handle that level of traffic with two lanes, especially, as has been noted, you know, our long-term planning does call for the southern crossing of Caulfield Lane to connect to that traffic circle, the south end of town. So, that's, you know, going to encourage more traffic to get on there when that gets built, and that southern crossing actually is in our fee program. So, in my view, it's second in line behind the Rainier Connector, but it's going to get built in our lifetimes. And so, you know, you don't want to put in a road diet in a place where you're planning on increasing traffic substantially down the road, and I think there needs to be a whole lot more analysis. The other thing is, you know, we successfully competed for the federal grant funding the last time around without submitting that road diet, and we got Lakeville and East East Street paved with federal funds. So, you know, there are other projects in town that we can achieve with that federal funding, not with the road diet.
Thank you. Kathy?
So, you know, I think road diets need to sort of be looked at, depending on where you're talking about putting them. You know, the one that is currently under consideration is on Petaluma Boulevard South, and that could create additional traffic, once that Caulfield Crossing, the southern crossing, is built. So, I think it's something that needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis, and it needs to be looked at in terms of where in town you are, and, you know, what the traffic situation is in that part of town. You know, the road diet that we have now, I think it has pros and cons. We've got traffic backing up, which is a problem, but I think, you know, having that middle lane for trucks to park in and having more room on the sides for people to get in and out of their cars is a good thing. So, you know, there are definitely pros and cons to the one that we have downtown, and I think we just need to be very careful in analyzing whether it would be suitable to put one on Petaluma Boulevard South, further down.
Thank you. Gabe, road diets?
Road diets are such a fun topic. It's one of the ones that, I get one of the most visceral reactions from folks when they talk to me about, they either really hate it, or they hate it. But when you look at, when you look at the one, I voted for the road diet through downtown that went from Washington to D Street, and you look at the traffic calming measures that have taken place, accidents have gone down, and so we've had some positive impact from it. You look at other areas of town where we've done road diets, if we could recall, on McDowell at Baywood, we had significant traffic accidents at that intersection, and we put in a roundabout, and we did a road diet in that area, and we haven't had accidents, and we haven't had deaths from accidents as a result. And so, we need to look at, what is the top priority for our city, using the funds that are available? So, the last time we were presented with the Petaluma Boulevard South, I did not vote for it, and I asked that we shift the funds to the Lakeville-D Street project, and I think that was a wise decision at the time. But next time that road diet comes before us, you know, I want to look at, is that the top priority for our community? And if that's what we feel is the top priority, then we're going to have to do it. But, you know, they're not, they serve a purpose, and they keep people safer, so it's important for us to look at those.
Thank you. Bill, your thought on road diets?
I think that a lot of the traffic that we're experiencing, that detracts from the so-called road diet, is traffic is coming off of 101, because that is such a parking lot right now. You know, our planning staff recommended the road diet for south Petaluma Boulevard, because they felt it was most qualified for the federal grant funding. And if we're in a situation where we can't really afford to fix our streets, then why not use the project that's most likely to achieve federal grant funding and fix Petaluma Boulevard South? And it's also, I think, kind of a misnomer or a mistaken concept, that the road diet is supposed to improve traffic. It doesn't. It carries the same capacity, but it's also a benefit for pedestrians with a bulb out, so the pedestrians don't have to go as far to get from the crosswalk, from one end of the crosswalk to the other. And it's also safer for cyclists. It increases that width between the traffic that's moving and the parked cars on the side, which is really a dangerous place to be. So, while a road diet may not allow you to move more quickly in your vehicle, it does provide more safety for pedestrians and cyclists, and it's statistically proven that there's fewer accidents because of it.
Thank you very much. And our audience is bound and determined to keep on talking transportation. This time, however, we're going to the river. So, Kathy, we'll start with you. What do you think the council direction should be for improving the Petaluma River? I'm going to guess the big mounds of silt are part of the question askers' concern.
Okay. So, you know, when you talk about the river, we have kind of two things that we can talk about. One is the dredging, and the other is, you know, having people have access to the river and having multi-use paths along the river and all of that. I will answer the dredging question, because I'm assuming that that's where we're going, but maybe there'll be another question later about other river activity. With respect to dredging, I and other members on the council have been working with Congressman Huffman to get funds to dredge the river. We are long overdue for dredging. The problem is, is that the federal funds are going to places like the Port of Oakland and the Port of Long Beach, because those are, obviously, they get a lot more use. And so, what is happening is the rivers that have river-dependent industry, which we do, aren't getting any federal funding to get dredged, and it's a big problem, and we're working with some other communities that are in the same situation as we are, and we're actively pushing to try and get some funding. You know, obviously, the gridlock in Congress doesn't help, but it's something that we are pursuing and that I'm working with Congressman Huffman on.
Thank you. Gabe?
So, as Councilmember Miller stated, we have been working with Congressman Huffman, with Congressman Thompson's office. We've had numerous community meetings to get feedback from not only the folks that use it for commerce, our river for commerce, but from the yachting community, which bring in a significant amount of tourism dollars into our community, and then the recreational users of the river as well. Dredging is important for our river. It is far overdue, but it's this slippery slope of fundings based on tonnage, you know, the commerce tonnage that goes up and down the river. Because it's gotten so bad, the tonnage has to go down, because they can't load the barges up as much as they used to, and so then, less tonnage is moving on the river, and it just creates a bigger problem for us. There is a trust fund available at the federal level with this money that Congress is not allocating, which is why we've worked with the city of Santa Fel, Vallejo, Napa, and a couple others, to form a JPA, to work on when those funds become available, being a collaborative project and being at the front of the line when Army Corps of Engineer funding becomes available.
Thank you. Bill, your thoughts?
I don't think I need to go deeper into the dredging issue, but beside that, I think that we have a river trail enhancement plan that follows the river. Some of this river trail enhancement plan depends upon development to implement it when development along the river happens. Recently, sometimes that happens when development happens, sometimes it doesn't, because we don't hold developers to it. We have the Float House that was approved by the Planning Commission, and the Float House, I think, should be something we'll see in the Turning Basin that's going to provide kayak and paddleboard rentals and water safety for kids. I wouldn't be surprised if we don't see that next summer. The David Yearsley River Heritage Center has been offering boats, kayaks, paddleboards for free, and almost everything they've done has been absolutely on their own dime and from donations. So, there's some good organizations that are already doing a lot of enhancement for river recreation, that if they were supported in the least bit, could do a lot more. And I also want to add that the trestle, I think it's one of the most outstanding things about Petaluma is the fact that you can cruise here in your boat from Stockton, and so many people do that, and they park in front of a trestle that's just an eyesore. I'd like to see that fixed up.
Thank you. Mike?
Another 60 seconds, huh? So, the David Yearsley Center, which was mentioned, was moved to that spot by the developer of the Theater District. People who've lived in town for a long time will remember that that building used to stand next door to the fire station, and it was cut in half and moved out there lovingly and reassembled, and now we have a great resource. So, that was a success story, and, you know, hopefully, we'll get the rest of the McNear Peninsula under public ownership one of these years, if the owner wasn't asking three times what it can appraise for, which is a bit of a challenge. As has been mentioned, we are now in the early stages of the JPA with other communities in the North Bay. It would not surprise me if the gridlock in Washington continues, despite Congressman Huffman's best efforts. Congress continues to put the fund back in dysfunctional. I think we're going to have to look for other funding sources and look to ourselves, and, you know, it wouldn't be surprising to me if that JPA evolved to the point where we are purchasing our own dredge equipment and doing it ourselves in the North Bay. Petaluma is an advantageous situation. We have our own dredge spoil site. That's the interior of Scholemberger Park. The city has been going to great efforts to maintain that as an active, available dredge spoil site when dredging can occur. So, we're a heads-up on some of the other folks in similar situations.
Thank you very much. So, we circled away temporarily from transportation anyway. Let's look at some miscellaneous items. There's, we've talked a little contention. There's a ballot measure to legalize marijuana for recreational use, and if it passes, what policies, this will start to you, Gabe, what policies do you think that the city would need to implement or should put in place to address potential growing sale and use of cannabis?
So...
And let's take a minute and a half on this. Thanks.
You give us the craziest times for the easiest questions, and then the transportation ones that are long and in-depth, you give us 60 seconds. So, in the past year, the City Council has addressed the grow, growing of marijuana for medical purposes, and if recreational marijuana was legalized, those same grow regulations would apply. So, we did that in an effort to minimize the impact that grow operations that people are having at their homes had on the rest of the neighborhood. You know, one person growing 30 plants in the neighborhood overwhelms the neighbors, and so, we've done that. We haven't had a year yet of those rules in place to see how effective or ineffective those rules have been. The city currently has a moratorium on dispensaries or any cannabis-related businesses in the city limits, and so I don't see after recreational marijuana, if not, if it's legalized. I think it's going to be legalized. I don't see a big change within our city limits in that regard. We'll still allow for the delivery of medical marijuana from dispensaries outside of Petaluma, but I don't see any dispensaries of any sort, recreational or medicinal, opening up any time in the near future in the city of Petaluma.
Thank you. Bill, your thoughts?
Well, there's a lot we haven't figured out about it, but keeping dispensaries outside of the city limits won't keep marijuana out of the city limits. And if we're a city that's looking for creative ways to fund all these things that we can't fund now, then I would say, regulate marijuana and tax it, and use it as a creative funding source. Colorado's proving to have handled it pretty well. They don't have increased crime. In fact, their, the use by youth has dropped. So, I think that we'd be having our heads in the sand if we closed our eyes and pretended it didn't happen and let it all happen outside of the city limits, without being able to take advantage of the benefits that it could possibly have.
Thank you. Mike, your thoughts?
So, at one point, there were, I think, over 10 different competing initiatives cleared for signature addressing this issue, and they varied widely. Some of them would have overridden most, if not all, local controls. Others had different approaches. The one that made it onto the ballot is Prop 64, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, actually preserves, it's sort of a compromise. It preserves a fair amount of local discretion, so most of our, most of the controls that the city put in place at the, under the leadership of the Police Department primarily, will remain intact. But, you know, if it does pass, I think we'll be having a discussion about which elements we want to keep and which ones we want to revise. I am comfortable with the set of regulations we have put in place now, which ban large grows, which ban dispensaries, but allow dispensaries to deliver into town and allow limited grows indoors and outdoors by people who have the car. indoors and outdoors by people who have the cards. So I think that's going to be a discussion that continues to evolve going forward. And tying back to your previous question, you know, the fact that we, our police department is so understaffed is not unconnected to this issue because you can, you can put all the regulations you want into place, and then the question is, what can you enforce?
Thank you. And Kathy?
Yeah, so, you know, our ordinance regarding the growing of medicinal marijuana is less than a year old, and we're kind of waiting to see how that, how that goes and how that works out. But, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance, and I do think that if the ballot measure passes, which it probably will, we are going to have to look at some of these issues, but right now, I'm comfortable with, you know, not having dispensaries in town. And I think that if the ballot measure passes, we're going to get into a whole area of regulation and regulatory law that's going to come into effect. And you're going to see marijuana that's regulated like alcohol and like cigarettes. And there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of work around that. And I do like the idea of kind of waiting to see how that, how that shakes out before we rush into, into the, into the fray. You know, there are, there are certainly states that have legalized, have legalized marijuana. Colorado is obviously one of them. But it's, it's not, youth aren't allowed to buy marijuana in Colorado, just so you know. And, you know, it's, it's something that we have to, you know, as a parent, I think it's important. We, you know, just like we don't want our kids using alcohol, we don't want them using marijuana either.
Thank you there. So you had no trouble using up that minute and a half, you guys. So let's take a look a little bit at climate change. We'll start with Bill. What can or should the city council do to make directions that will combat climate change?
Well, we could have started earlier. In 2005, the city council unanimously signed a declaration associated with SAB32, I believe it was, that we would reduce greenhouse gases 25% below 1990 levels by 2015. And we didn't do anything. The biggest contributor was transportation, and, you know, what could we do about transportation? Now we live in a time where we've never had more choices on, and how we decide what we drive. We have a community, a county, that has the largest percentage of electric vehicles per capita in the country. And we could do more to incentivize the use of electric vehicles where we can charge them instead of just leaving it up to whatever people want to put in. The second biggest contributor is our built environment. And here we have our building industry is having a renaissance, utilizing new techniques and technologies that make our homes and businesses more energy efficient and safer than they've ever been. And still, we're approving and permitting projects at just the code minimum. We have two tiers for our CalGreen standards for energy efficiency. We could adopt a higher standard. We could go to tier two.
Thank you. Your thoughts, Mike?
So, you know, Kathy's really our point person on this, sitting as Petaluma's representative on the Regional Climate Protection Authority, and I'll let her take the lead on that in a moment. But I'm very excited to see the Climate Action 2020 program coming forward. It's multi-dimensional. It's an enormous document covering all kinds of areas. And, you know, there are some things that city government controls. There are a lot of things that city government and county government really don't control. And so we can talk about, you know, imposing standards and increasing standards on new construction, and that's great, and that's important. But we have an enormous existing building stock that really is not subject to any further rules by local government. So we have to come up with programs to encourage people to do the right thing and work with Sonoma Clean Power, work with the other energy providers. I'm pleased with what we have done in terms of requiring charging stations. I'm not an EV person yet myself. I expect to be at some point in the future. And so, you know, I think, I think our region is doing incredibly well compared to other parts of the world. And it just boggles my mind that we have a presidential race where you have a serious contender for president who thinks climate change is a hoax. That just boggles my mind. We live in such a special area where that debate really doesn't occur anymore, and now we're trying to figure out what we should do about it.
Thank you. Kathy, your thoughts?
Sure. So I am one of the directors of the Regional Climate Protection Authority, and I'm very pleased that we have recently adopted Climate Action 2020. And the next thing is for the Petaluma City Council and the various entities in the county to adopt it as well. So that's one thing that I look forward to coming before the council in the very near future. You know, Sonoma County has been recognized by the Obama administration as a climate action champion, and that's a tremendous, tremendous honor for us and really speaks volumes to the good work that we've done in climate action and making, making our environment better and combating climate change. So, you know, we're working on this in a lot of different levels. The plan is enormous. It addresses, it addresses everything. It addresses transportation. It addresses infrastructure. It addresses businesses. It addresses everything, housing, everything. And so I really encourage you to take a look at it. It's a comprehensive document, and it's really going to be our blueprint going forward, you know, as we go forward into the future.
Thank you very much. Gabe?
So our building standards are just one piece of the puzzle, looking at where we get our energy from, promoting the use of renewable energy resources with Sonoma Clean Power. Petaluma did join. We were looking at the idea of would Petaluma Clean Power be a possibility outside of just joining Sonoma Clean Power, which is why we didn't jump in at the beginning. And we took our time in making that decision. And I think working with Sonoma Clean Power and having representation on that body will allow us to bring more renewable energy opportunities to Petaluma. So utilizing the wastewater treatment plant and the space there to put in photovoltaic, to do the retrofitting to the buildings that the city has, encouraging the residents in the community to do retrofitting to the existing building stock, creating incentives, be it rebates, would also encourage folks to do that. And so I'm supportive of those going forward, and I don't think any of us up here deny that the climate change is a reality and it's something that we need to tackle.
Thank you very much. Circling back around, Mike, the Petaluma 2016 Local Economy Profile report shows that the demographics of Petaluma are seeing an increase in the Hispanic Latino percentage, hovering currently around 23%, 24% with projection of increase. What steps would you, as a council member, take or support-taking to help integrate this segment of the community into paid and unpaid city jobs? For example, police, fire, department, city hall, volunteer commissions. How would you help engage this segment of our population?
So I think our community has done a good job. It's certainly been a goal of the community to, on the HR side, to try to get diversity on our commissions and committees. We've been successful at times, less successful at others. And we certainly want to have employees in our workforce, throughout the workforce, who can interact with the community as it is, and especially if there are language challenges in the community. So that's certainly something I support. I believe in some cases, we have pay differentials for language skills. Not throughout the organization, but I believe that exists in some places. So, you know, those are, those are things that we want to achieve, and just getting, getting kids through school and through college and to the point where they're ready to take on those kinds of jobs, you know. So it's not just a city issue, it's the education system. And I hope you asked that question of the previous panel here tonight, as they were here, because it's, you know, it takes a village, and that's our philosophy.
Thank you. Kathy?
So we do have, we do have pay differentials for second languages in certain departments, and I support that. I think it's a good idea. We are encouraging more diversity in our work, our workforce. And, you know, we also are encouraging it in our unpaid positions, which are our commissions and our, and our committees. We think it's, we think it's important. We're a diverse community, and the city needs to reflect that diversity across the board.
Thank you. Gabe?
So as one of the, I think, under five Latino elected officials in the county, I've been working with Loceen, which is a group in Sonoma County, working on how do we address some of these issues countywide. If you look at the staffing in the police department, 20% of our police force is of Hispanic descent. So we are making strides to make our police force more reflective of the community that they serve. And there's been huge efforts in the past four years to do that, and hopefully, they will continue going forward. Reaching out to the different groups to not only get diversity in ethnicities, but diversity in age is also important. And so, you know, we have younger members. We have more folks under 40 than we ever have had on our boards and commissions in the city, and, you know, I feel that that's important as well, to have a diverse mix of folks. Having input on the community is very important. I think I've been doing a fairly good job of doing that, and I will continue to do so if reelected.
Thank you. And Bill, your thoughts?
Well, it's not too different than any other group of people that would like to live here in a community. They need to find affordable place to live. They need to find jobs that are going to allow them to live here. We need, they need jobs that pay a living wage and give them the opportunity to be trained and be able to advance so that the jobs aren't dead-end. With a lot of the development that we've been seeing over the last eight years, we see a lot of fast food restaurants and chain retail stores, which are really at the bottom of the economic scale in terms of wages and benefits. So I think we need to focus on a different type of economic opportunity for people that are moving in. You know, I grew up in central California in a small rural town, and half the, half my friends, the kids that went to school were Mexican kids. And, you know, I learned a lot from them, and I would, I would like to see them incorporated in our community.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, this is an excellent time to have you guys be thinking and outlining out loud your one-minute summaries. We want to know, we're going to start with Gabe, and we're going to work back to Bill. Would you please tell the audience and those at home for one minute why they should vote for you on November 8?
Thank you, Pam. It's been a pleasure this evening, and thank you everyone that showed up tonight. Thank you to my mom, who's here in the audience. For the past five years, I've been serving the community on the city council, and I think I've been doing a good job at taking the voice of the community and making the decisions that I think are best to move the city forward in a positive direction. We've seen great improvements in our economic opportunities in the community. We've seen growth in businesses moving into our community. We've seen an increase in tax revenue in our community. These are all important things that we need to have in order for us to move forward in a positive direction as a community. I think having a diverse council is important. Having different views is important, and I hope that in November, you vote for me to continue serving this great community. Thank you.
Kathy?
So I've been on the council now for almost four years, and it's been my pleasure to serve the community. I am the only East Side resident on the council. I'm the only East Side resident running for council, and I think that goes back to a little bit of that diversity. You know, we want some representation on the council from the East Side. You know, we have worked very hard over the last four years. We've worked very collaboratively. You don't read a lot about the council disagreeing on a lot of things anymore, and I think that's a really good thing because it's indicative that we're on the same page, moving the city forward. And we're not, you know, development is a big part of what we do here, but it's about 5% of the decisions that the council makes. The rest of them are budget and public safety and a lot of other things that are critical to keep the community moving forward.
Thank you. Mike?
So I've been doing this for 16 years now. So I'm the senior member of the city council, and looking back at what we've achieved working together at the community, it's a pretty impressive list. We attracted a movie theater and revitalized downtown. We created, we built a new environmentally friendly wastewater plant. We've built two new parks with playing fields for youth and adult sports. We've completed the Peyran flood fix. That took years and years and years. I am, at this point in my council career, focusing on trying to achieve some other things in the community. I've taken on the Lafferty Ranch issue. I cannot tell you how many hours I've spent trying to come to a successful resolution on that. I have championed the Rainier Connector, and as I mentioned, we're about to have $34 million set aside for that. We have an approved EIR. We are not going to need to ask the taxpayers to help us with that. We've got a lot of other things going on. I think there's more that I can contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bill?
Well, the city council may not spend most of their time focusing on development. Development is what provides and funds our coffers. And what I've heard tonight is that we don't have the money to do the things that we need to do to fix our, fix our streets, bike paths, maintain our parks. We can't, we don't have enough income to maintain our infrastructure. And we've just developed almost 45 acres of commercial development, and somehow, it's still not working. So as the only candidate who has a background in architecture and planning, with 10 years combined on historic and cultural review and the Planning Commission, I think that the city council would benefit from somebody with my experience and expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I do my closing remarks, I thought of something that's universal to the county and very important to our city. From a council perspective, we'll just go down the line, yes or no. Do you support Measure Y, the library measure, Bill?
Absolutely. Our libraries aren't just a place where we store books. They're a repository of our history and our culture and our community, and we absolutely need to support them.
I'm going to take that as a yes.
Yes, I've officially endorsed it. I think I'm listed on their website.
Thank you. And Kathy?
I've also officially endorsed it, and I support it.
Thank you. And Gabe?
I'm listed as a supporter as well.
Thank you so very much. So this brings us to our conclusion. For over 50 years, the American Association of University Women has sponsored candidates' forums, usually with our favorite partners, the League of Women Voters of Sonoma County, and often the Petaluma Argus Courier. All three of us encourage informed and active participation in government. The fact that you're here tonight or watching from home indicates that you share that philosophy. You can find additional nonpartisan information on the League of Women Voters' election website at smartvoter.org. Excellent overview of what's going on on those 17 propositions. I would like to thank the candidates for joining. I would like to thank the candidates for joining us this evening. Please give them a round of applause to show your appreciation. So on behalf of AEW, the League of Women Voters, and the Argus Courier, we want to remind you to vote on or before November 8. And you know, vote early, vote often. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.